I'm going to call this meeting to order, 7:05. Again, I would remind everyone to please make sure your volume is turned off.
This is the stuff.
And we'll move on to a
I can't hear it.
Of our members.
Yes, okay. Joe Adella?
Here.
Don Bonita?
Here.
Brad?
Here.
Angela?
Here.
Alex?
Here.
Justin?
Here.
Jennifer?
No.
Jane?
Here.
Louis here, Pete?
Here.
And Mary?
Here.
Good.
All right, we're just missing Jennifer and she's on her way, so. Okay, is there any public comment on agenda items? Any public comment on agenda items? Any member of the public who wishes to comment should please raise their hand or put the raised hand symbol on the screen. Going once, twice. I see no one, no, no comments, we'll move on. Is there anyone who wants to remove from the consent agenda the Board of Education units in July 2022? Seeing none, those units will be adopted. Updates on COVID-19.
Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone. I sent you all a report from the Housatonic Health Department and basically it outlines very favorable numbers and trends for our area. Zero in Washington, and this analyzes cases, as you know, per 100,000 residents, and that helps track the incident rates of COVID-19 in the community and allows for standard comparisons between communities. So Washington was at zero and that was the test positivity rate as well. And I also reviewed data with the health directors, Roxbury and Bridgewater, all less than five of us. Five, and this data is from around August 12th through 18th. That being said, I did outline to parents and staff in a communication I sent that we were returning to school on Wednesday in full, and that's while simply maintaining some ongoing health safety measures in place, such as encouraging frequent hand washing, and again, I mentioned this before, cleaning and disinfecting high-use places such as bathrooms. The state is also still providing districts the ability to distribute test kits as needed, of course, so that that is a part of what we will continue to do. Informing certainly families and staff about vaccination and booster clinics, and I think in the report at the beginning, it did actually mention dates that were happening, occurring. So again, this is today, and I want to emphasize, we take our cues from the health departments and the Connecticut Health Department, both well, our local health directors and local health departments and the Connecticut Health Department, and we should always be prepared if we need to pivot at some point. As you know, something could change, and I've said this to parents as well, and that could warrant additional review of putting back some mitigation strategies. Right now, we're not masking, we're not social distancing, all of those things that were in place before heavily. It does not look like at this point this will be necessary at all. I also want to make sure, though, that we still communicate cases and trends as we have in the past, but it is really, I have to say, nice to get back to a sense of normalcy for our staff and our students, so. Yes?
The only thing I wanted to note is that if people do a home test, they don't, they don't report that to anybody except for you in school, but they don't, they don't do anything with help for it.
No, it just helps if, to know if there's obviously in the family a positive case, and then it comes usually to the school nurse, so we do, right, we do learn about it that way, and then we report certainly cases too, so you're right, you're accurate on that.
Okay, any other questions? All right. We'll move on to reports and recognition. I had the privilege today to attend and speak on your behalf at the convocation. It was awfully early, here we are on the 22nd, but everyone was here, it was a great event. Dr. Rodriguez really did a marvelous job leading us in, you know, leading her staff into the, into the next year, and again, it was a, it was a great event, we had a total, including myself, of five board members there. John, Justin, Jane, and Mary were all there, and it was nice to see representation, and you know, people seemed pretty excited about starting the new year. Hopefully, a year of relative normalcy compared to the last couple. So that's, that was today's report, I hope you all had a nice summer, and now we're back to work. I'll turn it over to Dr. Rodriguez for her report.
Okay, thank you. First, I wanted to kind of echo what you've already said, and that's thanking the board members who were able to make it to the convocation today. And as you know, it was the first day back for everyone, and by all accounts, I think, as you mentioned, it was very positive, I heard lots of really wonderful feedback from staff, I spent a lot of the day with them. And again, thank you, Mr. Kava, for speaking on behalf of the board. And at some point, maybe not tonight, but I'd like to share just some soundbites from our Teacher of the Year, Catherine Brooks from Booth, who, as you know, left our district, but she sent a heartfelt speech via video, which really made, it just really was wonderful for the convocation, which we haven't had since 2019 due to COVID, so it really, really all came together, and so I appreciate everybody there. Today's PD actually focused on some priorities and safety and security, and I did sit in with the S V S group, and I will be sitting in with other groups tomorrow. We have another PD again tomorrow before we welcome our students back on Wednesday, and so we are looking really good at this point, and I'm just so happy to be back and with so many staff that I finally saw again today that I hadn't seen in years, so it was really a nice homecoming. Just to move on, personnel, we've had some appointments. Jessica Bailey, our para at S V S, and Danielle Sa, Boa Ventura, a custodian, part-time at W P S, and Dawn Field, who is a school nurse at Booth Bree. I mentioned that we were down two school nurses, as you know, in my last Sunday highlights. We have one that we've hired, and we are very close to a second, so I think we could be filled, as we should. So just wanted to mention that. Kate Gomes, an elementary teacher, it's a one-year at W P S. Shelley Lee is sped teacher at, at S V S. Owen Moore, who is, we're welcoming as the JV field hockey coach at S V S. Jacqueline Salzo, the para at W P S. Rosalinda Schneider, this is a one-year elementary teacher at W P S. And James Wilson, who's the tech ed teacher, again, one year at S V S. We've had some resignations and retirements. Jennifer Anthony Bog, which was an educational assistant at W P S. Cheryl Karadad, who's a para professional at Burnham. Edith Quattamani, who is, again, one of the school nurses I mentioned at S V S. Terry Transzinski, a school nurse at W P S. And we've had some leaves of absence, so Tanya Adorno, who's a tech ed teacher at Chappagh Valley, will be leaving from maternity, and Taylor Pierce, English Language Arts teacher at Chappagh. So those are both resignations and retirements, as well as leaves. And finally, on a very positive note, and if you are all wondering why, our A D back there, Matt Paracci is wearing a Pittsburgh Pirates shirt. He is a proud daddy, as his son Dominic just got signed, so congratulations.
Yes.
I will tell you that it was close, I mean, we spent a good portion, I did, when I came in in July, we, you know, obviously trying to hire and fill those positions, but we did very, I think, very well in finding people to fill those spots. Is it, is it a struggle? Yes, it really is. We made a lot of calls, you know, we, you know, you put yourself out there as much as you can to see who's interested, but we did fill the spot, so I think we're in really good shape at this point.
I was gonna say, just like Pittsburgh, it was a good draft.
One other question, I got a mail saying that they're looking for employees. Are we having trouble with our delivery filters, or are we going to struggle?
No, and Nicole can probably speak to this better than I can, but in just what I've heard with All-Star here, we're in good shape. I know that it's a challenge in other districts, I came from one where that was a huge challenge, and still is, but I think we're all set, am I correct in accurately depicting that, Nicole?
I just had a quick question, the one-year positions, does that mean they're only staying for one year? There's three of those in the
Yes, those are budgeted as one-year positions.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you.
Now, is that because those, those are extra classes that we're holding of that grade? And the next, the next year it goes to a different grade, or is that pretty much the reason?
I'm not sure about that, Nicole.
Okay.
Oh, you need to unmute.
Better? So the one-year position at Washington Primary School is because we needed an additional section of first grade, but we already have two sections of second grade because it was added last year, so it's a one-year position, depending what kindergarten enrollment looks like rolling up. And who's the, I'm not, I'm not sure who the third
Was it James Wilson, the tech education teacher at Chappagh?
That's a maternity leave.
That's intern, yeah, okay. And then Kate Gomes at Washington Primary, that was the one, and then Rosalinda Schneider is also at Washington Primary, so those were both, okay.
Okay, other questions? All right, we'll move on to Treasurers' Report, John, do you have anything?
Yes, August was a very active month for the financial issues concerning Region 12, as on August 16th, the region closed on a $4 million general obligation bond anticipation note at 2.74% interest from Webster Bank Public Finance Corporation. This is a short-term, one-year note, which will be due on August 15th, 2023. This banned money was used for the ag and science lab construction that someday soon should be reimbursed by the state school construction grant appropriation, hopefully before next August 15th, when the, when the ban is due. Also, on August 16th, the region closed on a 10-year term, 2.5 million general obligation bond through Webster Bank as well. These are 10 $250,000 bonds. One bond is retired each and every year of the 10 years.
Excuse me, John, I think those are actually promissory notes, they're notes, not bonds. Am I, am I wrong on that? Oh, they are bonds, oh, surprise, I'm sorry to interrupt.
So the interest rate for that was 2.86. This money was used for the Chappagh improvements, basically the roof. Don reminded me that it was boiler, or the well tank, water tank?
Water tank, the 100,000 gallon water tank in the boiler.
And the perimeter heating, and the maintenance garage. Okay, so so if you guys recall the saying, "Timing is everything", Barry Bernaby, who is principal at Phoenix Advisors, who brokered the loans, he sent an email, remember I said August 16th was the closing? Well, on August 17th, he sent an email to Nicole, "It is a good thing you locked the rates in last week. The new Inflation Reduction Act, just signed into law by President Biden today, is having a negative impact on municipal interest rates. The new law makes municipal bonds much less attractive, and therefore municipal rates increase significantly today. The new corporate minimum tax appears to negatively impact demand for tax-exempt municipal bonds. The law's central revenue generator is 15% minimum tax applied to the adjusted financial statement income, as opposed to adjusted taxable income." So, yeah, the anti-inflationary bill, in my mind, is going to create inflation due to the higher interest rates, but anyway, that's, who am I?
But not for us, though.
Not for us, yeah, by one day. So just to recap, there are 17 years remaining on the $8 million bond that we took three years ago. That, that bonding interest is variable, and I don't really understand the whole formula, but we are currently paying 5% interest on that. The balance of that, the $8 million bond is 7.175. So altogether, we are enjoying a 13.675 indebtedness. And that's about all I have, any, any questions on that?
I don't think so, thank you, John. Okay, we'll go on to committee reports, I'm not expecting a whole lot here because it's been the summer, but we'll go through it anyway, and you could let me know when you expect to meet, if you haven't met, Justin?
Educational I have nothing new to report, our next meeting is October 24th.
Okay, at advance, Joe?
There has not been a meeting since June, and I have not heard of a new one yet, so I do not have anything to report at this time.
Okay, Alex, Finance and Operations?
Yes, we have not met since June 6th, I believe, and so I have nothing to report. Our next meeting is September 12th.
Okay, labor negotiations, I can report that we have not had anything since our last meeting, and we will not be having another meeting for at least two years since we have reached contracts with all of our labor unions that run for three-year period of time. Strategic long-range planning?
We did not meet over the summer, but we will be meeting in September. And I did just want to give a quick shout-out to the agri-science team for having a beautiful tent and display at the Bridgewater Fair. So I don't know if anyone else got to go see it, but it was very well done, and I'm hoping that there'll also be some great actions in both the Bridgewater and Roxbury tractor parades, which are coming up in September and October.
Very good. All right, we'll move on to new business. First item of new business is athletic co-op teams, program services, and costs. Who is going to take the lead on this?
So we have Matt here.
Good, okay. So what I wanted to do is kind of give a State of the Union on our current situation, and something that I am proposing. First of all, just to talk about our longest existing co-op, that would be our ice hockey team. Our ice hockey team started back in the 1980s, it was called Ice Hockey Team. At some point between the mid-1980s and 1993, when I came to this position, a co-op started. So I was involved, starting co-op, and I got here in 1992, we had a co-op. The co-op went on through different incarnations, two instances have always been in Chappagh and Lydusfield since I've been here. Currently, it is Chappagh, Lydusfield, Nanawak, Thomaston, and it's been that way for several years. And the way this particular co-op is structured, Chappagh pays for the coaches, coaching staff, and Chappagh pays for transportation. And as far as insurance coverage, and I was determined to withhold, having an ice hockey team does not create any additional charges for our insurance. For 2021, 2022, we had 20 kids, 20 player time roster, 11, 11 of them were from Chappagh, 7 were from Nanawak, 2 were from Lydusfield, we had two student managers that were all from Chappagh. So 22 participants, 13 of them were from Chappagh. Now, there are a lot of costs associated with ice hockey, primarily ice hockey, which is an astronomical cost. Also, the vehicles, the recreations, equipment, there's some other things that get paid for. But Booth, the char group, Chappagh pays for all of that. So Region 12 pays for the two coaches' salaries and transportation from Chappagh to the away games. And families have to make contributions, buy some contributions each year to Booth Club, and they have a choice, they can either make full contribution, or they can make a partial contribution and raise the balance of that figure in fundraise for the Booth Club. So that's it for the ice hockey.
Can I ask you a question?
Please.
Is, do we get any reimbursement or, or contribution from any of the other teams, the other three teams?
The way this is currently structured, we do not.
Okay, so presumably they pay their own transportation to games?
Well, they, they just can't, the kids come here
Oh, they come here and we transport all the kids?
So for away games, the bus needs to go from Chappagh. The kids from the other schools get driven, they drive, all the adults drive themselves, their family members drive them, they carpool, but they get here, they get to Chappagh, they get on the bus, and they drive themselves to practice, now obviously, you know, we get to practice at much rate, and that majority of our practices are that majority are, our practices are in both these grades. Sometimes we have some, our practices are in both these grades, and usually twice, twice we now privately practices, you know, in computers. And for all the practice, all the kids from other Chappagh, Nanawak, Lydusfield, Thomaston, they get themselves here, or to the ring. And, okay, I already answered that question. For away games at Edwards, all across the state, all kinds of crazy hours, cafes like that, most of these are here from Chappagh, so people get themselves to Chappagh, they get the bus.
All right.
And just to be clear, the reason why we supply transportation from Chappagh to games is because we're the home, Chappagh.
Works is, there are host schools and there are partner schools. Chappagh has always been a host school, and we, yeah, we run, we administrate the co-op. So myself, the administration here, support, we, we administrate, we, you know, we hire coaches, you know, all the scheduling and everything comes from, out of our, our open here, so yeah, that's why.
That's fine, okay.
Okay.
Any other questions on ice hockey? Okay. Put it all, because obviously, we have a different, we have so as everyone here knows, we are in the infancy of five-school co-op. The program we're playing is all Northwest United. The whole school is Wolf Tech High School, it's kind of an interesting, unique arrangement. All of our recite, but everything we do is at Nanawak. So schools involved are Wolf Tech, Nanawak, Homero, Lydusfield, Nanawak. Everything takes place at Nanawak. Currently, as of right now, we have eight kids on the roster. Last year that I got, last week, was 65 kids, between all five schools, so there's some big numbers right now. And travels, similar to where ice hockey travels, it is at Nanawak and take the bus there. Now, in the past, and this has been my understanding, trying to describe, is Wolf Tech, they have the state mobiles, and those buses are owned by the state, and each school has a home, and their teachers are licensed, they have the class, whatever, practice license. Sometimes they Wolf Tech bus, they will protect kids to the away games, rather than having them ride to Nanawak. As of Friday, I'll tap them on, it's gonna work, the code is unsure. So, just to make sure, in my place or miss anything, so yeah, I said eight kids on the roster from Chappagh, as of right now, is 65 kids, small schools. The charge to Region 12 is 8.5 per player. Annual church class, as we play football, it is $1,000 in addition to what to what we normally pay without football. And, you know, obviously, we are in the infancy of the program, or at least are involved with the program, so just not before we report that, I don't know if anyone has questions.
So 8.5 per player, which I think when we originally discussed, it was 3.50 per player. So when we, we all discussed it, that was, so that's changed significantly.
My understanding, and again, this is, you know, Wolf Tech wants the program, so my understanding is they have so many kids joining the program that they have had to buy a ton of new work.
And then my other question is that, so 8.5 per player, is that a lot more? I don't know how that works compared to other sports, so how does, like, so 8.5 per player that we're paying, so there's no co-op, I mean, there's no booster club or anything to help contribute, that that comes out of the region's pocket?
Right. That's, yeah, I mean, that's the agreement you guys came up with, you know, however many months ago that was, yeah.
But 8.5, is that the average price per player for other sports? I mean, I don't, I don't know, do you know?
I mean, it's just, it's totally, it's absolute margins, I don't even know how you would compare it, yeah, it's
500 is a large gap from just a few months ago, I think.
Yeah, I mean
Well, where did we get to 3.50 figures? We, we kind of, we kind of took that from somewhere else, didn't we? That wasn't a figure we were quoted by.
We had a draft in the MOU that stated 3.50.
Oh, 3.50 was in the draft MOU from Wolf Tech.
But we also were going to end up paying for a bus, and we're not paying for a bus anymore, so I don't know how much, we're going to pay for a bus, and I actually got a text message from Megan a couple weeks ago, that said, "Don't forget, we agreed that there was going to be a bus to get these kids down to Nanawak. Now, we're not having a bus because practice Now, we're not having a bus because practices are not right after school. They are 5:30 to 7:30 because you have five schools, 24 towns. There's actually seven kids from Shabba. One kid dropped out. And there's 70 kids total right now.
Well, and I'm not saying this, but actually, when Megan and I talked last week, she said that we agree that we were not paying for transportation as a board. And that the only transportation was coming from if Womofo from Region 6, they were going to share the bus with us. So I don't, maybe we need Megan to clarify, but when I spoke with her, she said that we collectively agreed. And we go back to the meeting that we would not be paying for transportation.
I don't think we agreed on anything.
No, we specifically did discuss, and I'm happy to bring back the minutes because I went back and watched. But we discussed that we would not be paying transportation.
No, no, I know we discussed it, but we never voted on it. We just simply approved participation.
So the only bus that we discussed was for Region 6, if they wanted to come sweet and by on their way to bring us.
Yeah, it turned out that didn't make any sense.
Yeah, I mean, they, they, they were going to transport their kids, but once, I think Angela alluded to it. It was 65 kids coming from five different schools. I think it became unmanageable for them to practice at 2:30 or whatever. So they moved it to 5:30 so everyone could get there. And then that, that ban from Womofo would no longer be any sense. To have, you know, kids were going to go home and then just go to practice from there. That's my understanding. Do you agree with that?
So who do we pay the 850 per player to?
That's a question Nicole and I are trying to figure out. We are, we kind of thought we were paying it to Wolf Tech, but, but Nanawak sent us an invoice. So Nicole is hot on the heels for that information right now. I think it's Nanawak, right Nicole?
Nanawak invoice the 850.
So then why wouldn't we then charge the ice hockey players that come from other schools since we're the hosts?
We should. Something a discussion to have.
Okay. I mean, it just seems like it should be the same. I mean, I don't know what the figure would be, but it just seems like if we're getting charged, why shouldn't we take advantage of being a host school itself?
Well, what we absolutely should not do is we shouldn't be paying the full cost of a program that other schools participate and then paying into the other schools.
Right.
Absolutely should not do that. No, not fair. Sorry.
Didn't you state that the co-op hockey, their booster club helps pay for transportation? I thought that was part of.
Not for sure. They pay for the ice, which is, the figure is just through the roof. They pay for officials, which is not horrendous. And they pay for equipment, helmets, pads, and families pay, pay, pay a lot of that.
So none of that booster money goes to the transportation that we're.
That is correct.
Or the coach, he said.
Yeah, coaches, coaches and buses, we had paid for. And I know that when it started, and this is a long time ago, it was like, I'm just pulling a figure out of thin air here, but like 80% Shabba and a small percentage of other schools. And there, there, there used to be a rule, I have to, I could update myself on these rules, but if you got to 15 kids, if you got to 16 kids from one school, that maybe couldn't have a co-op anymore in ice hockey. It's a different number for every single sport. And we were for years right on the edge of being, of having just enough to have our own team. And I think a lot of that was, and we still have a lion's share of players to Shabba. A lot of that went to the philosophy of why, why we're paying it is because this, this was our team, kind of is our team. It could be just our team in the future. Anyway, I'm not saying that we shouldn't revisit things, but I think that is some of the thinking that led us to where we are now.
Well, it's kind of interesting that you had 80% Shabba participation in ice hockey, and if you look at football, it's 10% Shabba participation.
Yeah, there are 70 kids in the program, and we have seven. That's 10%. I would anticipate that some of them are 65. You know, I mean, Angela knows someone that dropped off from us already, and I coached football, I played football. There's been a lot of preseason stuff. Generally, when the hitting begins, that's when you start to see some attrition. And the hitting has begun, and I mean, we'll see, we'll see what happens. I would be, I'll be surprised if they, if they're at 65 for, for, you know, once, once they get into the season, but well, I mean, I don't really know. This is uncharted territory for us, so I guess we'll see. Mary.
Has there been any concerns about the fact that you don't get to choose who the coaches are? That somebody else gets to choose the coaches, and you don't know really much about them?
You know.
That kind of bothers me.
That hasn't been so far. And, I mean, there's two things. There is some language in, in the, in the agreement about if we wanted to, to add a coach of our own in there. That agreement isn't finalized yet, but, you know, I, I look at it from the outside, from ice hockey. It's been our coaches. You want to play on our team, you know, you're going to have to trust. We have a relationship. We're all in the same league. We all know each other. We've been working with each other for years. We compete against each other. There's, there's a trust there that, that we're going to do what's best for the kids. And, yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I know the head coach from Wolf Tech. I mean, I don't, I don't know her as a football coach, but I know her. I know her as a coach. She also coaches their, their women's basketball on the softball team. She is about as organized as you can be. She's meticulous, and she's got all of her eyes on it and a teeth for us. So I mean, I think they're, I think they're a good hands, but I understand. I understand. You're coming from there, Mary.
Another question, which is insurance. Now, Nicole, you and I talked, and there was some concern about that, but it seems you've resolved that. As to whether or not every kid, whether we had insurance for each one of these programs?
We've not resolved that. We need a written MOU in order for these kids to be covered under our policies. They're currently covered under the other schools. Policies, because there's no agreement in place for us to cover them.
Yeah, I mean, that, that worries me. I think I have, I have a problem with our kids playing contact sports. And there's a question of whether or not we have insurance, and we're waiting for an MOU. This is the MOU from Wolf Tech, the one we've been waiting for since the, since early spring, late winter.
Correct.
And it's supposedly still at their council's office?
According to Wolf Tech, it was at their council's office, but I did have a conversation with Nanawak because they're waiting for it as well. And Nanawak seems to think it's the sole thing. But I don't.
Is there any way we can light a fire under someone? Because my, my inclination is to pull the plug on the entire enterprise. No, but I mean, we, we need to be 100% sure that these kids are covered by insurance. If they're not covered by insurance, I think it would behoove the superintendent to end the pro, end the participation in the program immediately and forthwith. Kid gets injured, gets injured seriously, and where there's no insurance coverage, that's going to come out of our budget. I just hope you're paying attention to that. There must be insurance coverage or this, or we should stop. That, that's my view. That's superintendent's call.
Yeah, no, no. And we had that discussion just the other day. I sent, I know Matt's called. I've sent an email so that they know our situation, that we may just have to do that. And it's, it's awful for our kids, but it is serious. I agree with you 100%. The other piece of that is the equity that we were just talking about. I've, you know, worked in other districts, obviously. And not every sport is, is equal, right? We were just talking about that. We have to remember that. But there, this is a chance, I think, an opportunity now with all the agreements to look at them. And Matt has been wonderful about sitting down, and Nicole as well. We're going to do that. Because it should be equitable to some level when you're looking across all the co-ops.
Yeah, makes some sense. But that insurance thing has got to be solved, you know, like right now. I don't know, I don't know what else to say on that. Okay, that's interesting.
That was football, which brings me to, I think probably the agenda item that kind of got the conversation started. I want to talk a little bit about a wrestling proposal, and this proposal is coming from me. This is something that I support. Wrestling, it's, it's a lot different, obviously, than a team sport like ice hockey or football. You have C I A C, which most of you know is the governing body of sports. They allow what used to be called a one-person team. They've changed the name of it because it was kind of an oxymoron, but I'll play more about it when I'm alive. The collaborative team. They would allow three one-person teams, which, you know, didn't make any sense. What we have had over many years now, we have had, there have been huge gaps. We have wrestlers that have gone from one-man team. We had kids from Fairfield, that they were kids from Sherman, and that was, that worked for them. We had kids from Milkford. And that worked for them. For the last three years, we've had, we will talk to the three kids wrestling with Nanawak. Nanawak is very generous. They have, just they, they take our kids in, and when our kids wrestle, they don't wrestle, it's Nanawak wrestling. They go to Nanawak practice, they go to Nanawak meets, but when their time comes, they wrestle with a team of one for Shabba. So we've done, we've done that for the last four years, and Nanawak called me up towards the end of last school year that our program has grown to the point where we can't accommodate, we don't have the space. If we take your kids in and we have them wrestle during these meets, that means our kids can't do it. We just can't justify that anymore. But in Nanawak, they've been great to us. He actually, before calling me, reached out to Brookfield. Brookfield program is actually shrinking, and that's, that's officially wrestling, they, they may be nationwide, I'm not sure. It's shrinking. The sport needs to be a lot bigger. We had a, a full big league, virtually. Now we only have a few schools, modern value leagues over in the larger area, which is a gigantic league. They can't use a sport wrestling league on their own. So we have a virtually NDL league, softball league, where we compete against each other just to have a league. So it's a shrinking sport. And Brookfield's program has dwindled to the point where they are looking for someone to help them out. So I got a hold of them and said, we can take our, our one-man teams. And actually, I should back up a little bit. You're limited in three teams per year. Last year, we had two seniors and one sophomore returning. We have two other kids competing that I want to wrestle. And you're not allowed to do that. So I talked with that show, Megan, we're going to, I talked with two of my kids that we just, we don't have a spot for you. We want to talk to you next year. We should have a spot for you next year. That was before knowing that Nanawak was going to be able to accommodate us. So anyways, I talked with Brookfield. They would like us to co-op with them because they need more than three kids. And, and they, they don't want the one-man team. They want some kids that are going to contribute so they can actually compete in these. They have, so what they have proposed to us is we send them our wrestlers, there's, there's at least one, I know of, who has wrestled for a few years and we're trying to play things in the upper area. You know, we'll take whatever wrestling group you have, and all they have to ask of us, and obviously, we don't have this already, you know. I know that if we get to this point, you would agree, we would need an MOU, obviously. But I'm coming to you just to see if you would agree in principle. And you work out details later. The reason I'm coming to you now, even though it's a sport, if you are going to apply for a cooperative team co-op for a winter sport, you have to apply by September as well. So that's, that's why I'm coming to you now. They have to pay the site members, their assistant coaches $2,500. That, that's what, that's what Brookfield will ask. So make sure I didn't miss anything. I think that's about it. So, you know, I'm in support of this. It's, it's, it's a problem with kids. It's, you know, wrestling is traditionally not a sport that, you know, we're not going to have 10 basketball, ice hockey, and swimming to protect to go wrestle, to drive themselves to the water. It's going to be a handful of kids. I mean, I hope it's a handful of kids. We had to turn away a couple of kids last year because of our limitations. And so my proposal is that we discuss possibly entering into a cooperative agreement with the understanding that we would pay $2,500 to them to pay their assistant coach, and knowing people well, that it's got to be, you know, the whole of the insurance, and I think, if you look at the, 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 there's no individual cost for wrestling. Am I correct in saying that?
We're already insured for wrestling. The team's the one.
That's good.
Yeah, so that's, that's what I'm bringing to you with, with wrestling. So, you know, in, in, in my viewpoint, it would be beneficial, it would be positive for.
What, what do people think?
Just a question. How many typical wrestlers come from the host school? Like, how many Brookfield wrestlers would there be typically?
It varies pretty. I mean, it could be dozens. I don't think that, I don't think that they're going to have dozens because they've seen the numbers. When I talked with him, he said, you know, if this whole thing goes through and you can send us some kids, you know, how many? I said, well, I know three kids who definitely have expressed an interest. And he said, oh, God, at least I'm going to be more than that. So they, you know, they're, they're hurting there and, you know.
I guess where I'm coming from is just looking at the cost of it and saying, well, if we only have three kids and they have 25 kids, should we really pay for the full assistant coach? I don't know. It's just a question.
Well, yeah, I mean, look at it. They're, they're paying for the head coach, they're paying for the transportation. They're paying for the officials, the equipments.
So it might be completely fair. I'm just.
At my viewpoint, it is, it's a small token, but it means $2,500 doesn't come out of my heart, so. I mean, I understand that, that, you know, we have to look at every single dollar we spend. Very careful. I get it now. I don't want to be privileged about saying $2,500, but.
You know what the funny thing is? It's like, it's about 850 a kid if there's three kids. It's the same.
And I don't know what to think about how many we'll get.
Yeah.
I, you know, I, I think we'll get three for sure, but, and, and I didn't go around advertising. I didn't go around asking kids, you know, do you want to wrestle next year? Because I don't want to ask them about something, and they're saying, oh, by the way, you don't want to have it. Sorry.
It'd be sort of interesting to know how many Brookfield kids in agri-science might also be wrestlers, you know, because they'd be wrestling in their hometown. This is trash, but it's kind of cool that happens.
Julie, that's a good point, because when we had initially talked about co-opping with Brookfield for football, Megan said our kids would jump on the agri-science bus that goes back at the end of the day. Could our wrestlers jump on the agri-science, agri-science kid bus that goes back to Brookfield High School at the end of the day?
I don't know. I don't know what their practices would be. I mean, that's certainly something we can ask about. But I would tell you, at least one of these families, they've been driving, this will be their fifth, sixth year, you know, driving on their own to, to wrestling, because we got a younger sibling who's, we got one kid who graduated last year. The kid is going to be a junior. His older, his older brother wrestles for four years.
Right, but if we have a bus that's going, if, if practice is at 3:30 and our agri-science kids from Brookfield are going to hit Brookfield High School at 3:30, it might be a possibility.
To that point, certainly something we can look into, you know, I don't know. Are people generally, I'm sorry, Nicole.
The only, the only, we don't have a bus that goes to Brookfield. It's a Brookfield's bus, so we have to ask them to go upgrade.
But it might be something to look into.
These kids that I know who are interested are going to be juniors and seniors. My experience is that it would be caught dead right on the bus, you know.
But we'd also never advertise it because we've never had, you know, we, we never wanted to advertise it because we could only have three kids. Now, if you throw it out there and you say, hey, do you want to sign up for basketball or ice hockey or wrestling, you might get some interest.
Certainly, if we get to that point, and I, I hope we get to the point where that's a question that, you know, we look into. Certainly easy enough to find out.
All right. What, what's the, what's the general thought? Has anyone had a problem with this? Does everybody think it's a good idea? John?
I'd like to clarify. So even if they could catch a ride on the Brookfield bus, how would they get home?
Oh, they have to have that advantage, our parents.
The parents, pick them up. Okay.
So, but if you can take one end of that trip, if it worked out, and if they did mine, you know.
In my mind, across the board, for all the co-ops worse, we have to be consistent. I do recall talking to the parent about the football, and I said, you know, are you okay with And I said, you know, are you okay with, um, uh, providing your own transportation? And she said, yes, she didn't argue that no child is going to send a bus. Well, um, and this is a side comment, other than wrestling. If I would have known that Walke was going to increase the fee by five hundred dollars, I mean, that's four thousand dollars more than we agreed upon, basically. So I think we should revisit that. I mean, have we already paid the eight fifty?
No, I wouldn't, I wouldn't issue that check until the MOUs are placed.
By your own, um, recollection, we don't even know who gives the money. The money is.
It's being invoiced by Na'awag, and from my reading of the correspondence they sent us, they purchased the equipment. So this money is reimbursing Na'awag for the equipment they purchased.
They definitely did purchase. I, I know for a fact Na'awag is the school that purchased the equipment, yeah.
Well, we should revisit.
Well, yeah, no, I, I think that's a separate issue though, from the issue of do we want to, do we want to encourage Matt to negotiate, uh, a league for wrestling? You know, a co-op for wrestling? Is anybody opposed to that? I'm not, I'm not sensing that anyone really is opposed, and I think you should go ahead and do it.
Okay, all right, so I, I will, I'm in Hobart Field tomorrow, saying we're, we're in in principle. I just want to make sure that I don't walk out of here with some different understanding. Um, with the contribution of the, uh, twenty-five hundred dollars for the, uh, site member assistant coach, and an MOU has to be worked out, uh, that's signed by everyone well ahead of time. I'm not worried about that being an issue with Brookfield, they're very good with that stuff. Am I right?
No, I think you're in the right place. I, 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 I just want to make sure that MOU gets done, that we don't have any insurance issues. But if we're already insured, then maybe it's not as much of a concern. I mean, my big issue with that, we could argue whether we suspend a couple thousand here, a couple thousand there, but, um, I, there's just no argument that if the kids are not insured, we should not be allowing them to participate.
I hear what you're saying. Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Thank you. Excellent, thank you, Matt. All right, we're going to move on to, um, item number new business three, and that is review of facilities summer work, Mr. O'Leary.
Hello? So I've been asked to review some of the facilities work during summer. Um, as you know, we had, uh, another top monitor room, and that'll be substantially complete by the school start, I think. There's a couple little few things that have to be finished up. And then one loft and getting the night gates out. The manufacturer recommends applying a sealant to this upper portion, and it could only be done nine days after the original was applied. The other big job we had going on, uh, was painting the school, the upper building, all of the wood clavels, trying to save them. And that went pretty well. The whole district elementary school's got new furniture, so we had to remove the old furniture. Guys, uh, authorized the disposal last year, um, the last meeting was June. It was a little difficult to get in, and, but, um, it's taken hold, and, and right now we're installing the remaining last bit. Maybe teachers paid that for compensation, and a few, few points had to change there, but the main thing. That's enough to do. Um, all of the elementary schools got water fluids installed here, bottom floor and, and water pump. Um, that, that's got to be. All of the elementary schools got fiber bulbs to their, to their, uh, playgrounds. I, I do that every two years or so. Um, it's a big, it's supported by the Alamo and the school. Donovan, P, uh, didn't have a big budget this year because I haven't been able to arrange the, you know, the paving, because of that. Um, at this point, there's, we settled on a couple of contracts, S and S, uh, paving and O and G. Since the, O and G, paving, S and S, milling. Both of them are, are pushing us up to a fall. We're looking at the potential to use after-hours milling and Saturday paving, so I'll talk more about that when I find out more about that. We couldn't even agree on anything. The garage behind the building, the quick across to the district, is just about complete. The three doors that you've seen missing all summer, uh, were supposed to be doing a month of that. So the supply chain has slowed down, and, um, I keep being told that we're next to, we're next to, we've been a month of that already. You can live without the doors, really, you just need the, uh, the, uh, the roof for keeping the snow and the rain out for, uh. The, the other thing that arrived, it was on order, was the propane tank. And it came in last week, so we're, we're anticipating putting the propane tank in the next week. Uh, all the lights are in, the, uh, the heaters are in, the, uh, electrical's been run, the gas links have been run. However, the propane tank is not, the, uh, doors need to be installed. And the last piece will be the fire clip installation. There, the devices are no issue. The way in which we're going to, um, communicate a potential alarm in that building, this building, is still being worked out. The other big job up here that was being finished up this summer is boiler, the installation of a hundred-dollar boiler. And right now it's in, that all the components are operating, except for the, um, the communications from our BMS system, where we, uh, a little bit of guidance from the manufacturer of the burner to give a look that up, but it's not a, it's not an issue with running equipment, running equipment now. It's an issue with tying the, uh, the, and we're working on trying to get that done in the next week, probably. We shouldn't have any problem with it being done. The windows have been ordered, windows for this school have been ordered. They'll be in around the November timeframe, and once that happens, we're going to have to work a schedule up to get them done by, you know, uh, summer. This building through the summer got all of this, uh, fire, smoke tests, and heat detectors, the basins, and the ends all of these. They were original since years ago. That was, that was a big, uh, big job that just finished days ago. Donovan, central office, we've arranged for part-time facility replacements for WPS, WPTP, the beach area. Um, we reviewed all, we had a, a three-year review of all our public water supply inspections, and, and that went well. Uh, we set up a new maintenance shop down below the WPS, uh, uh, basketball, the gymnasium, so that we can operate a second maintenance group out of there. That individual Josh Murphy, who we hired a year ago, will be, uh, based there. And he'll be mostly handling all the elementary schools, the landscaping needs, and repair, a lot of that. And then, um, we recently worked to integrate three elementary school camera systems to the middle high school camera system, so that now the troopers can get on, or anybody can get on one site and see all of our, our security. And there were many other things that were done, but, um, I was just about to highlight, if anyone has a question, something more to happen.
Uh, if you do paving on a Saturday at Washington Elementary School, make sure you check with the town that they don't have something going on there, or the, or the teams that, or the town teams. Um, I don't know if they're going to have the Harvard special, or if they're not. I've not heard.
They have a lot of. Yeah, yes, um, I worked with Jim and Kevin when we started talking about the project, and, and we thought it may have occurred during the summer, and there were a number of things they were concerned of then. And I'm sure there will be later too, and yes, we will work to, to accomplish.
Um, did I hear you say that anybody can get onto our security system?
No, I didn't.
Any authorized person.
Any authorized.
Okay, okay, I was going to say that's, you know, counterproductive to have the bad guy be able to see their system.
I'm sorry. There are only people in the district who have access, and, and we wanted to extend that access to the, the troopers.
Yeah.
We have in the past provided them access to it, but they had various issues getting into the system. One of which was the, the three elementarys were separate from the middle high school, and it, it created some issues with, with trying to get in. It, it should be much more streamlined now.
Other questions? Busy summer.
It was, uh, I've got a couple of pages you guys.
I just wanted to thank Donovan and his team, uh, for all the work, and, and that's why I really asked him to, to speak, just to showcase how much work actually takes place to get all the facilities ready for students and staff, so thank you.
You're welcome. Nine days less, and we gotta talk to people down.
Thank you, Donovan.
Thanks, Tom.
Don, please, your, your crew did a marvelous job with cleaning the carpets here in the, in the mall. I, I thought those were maybe beyond repair, and they've, they made them look new. Yeah, they did a marvelous job. Okay, well, now we can move on to action items. Item number one, to consider and if appropriate, approve the field trip request to the FFA National Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, on October twenty-four to twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, for grades ten to eleven, the Ag Science Program.
Yeah, so we, we have, Tyler here is going to speak to this. Um, this is a trip that has been attended in the past, and it's a wonderful experience for our students, so. Um, Tyler, you're up.
So, uh, thanks, guys. And in regards to the fair comment, uh, Margie Groat and Megan Berry had spent twelve to sixteen hours there every day this weekend, so I just wanted to give it a quick shout-out. They did so much work there for us, so. Um, so our chapter has the opportunity to travel with Na'awag on their bus this year to Nationals. Um, the hope is to bring the officer team and two advisors. And for those of you that don't know, uh, I've got a little, uh, something I typed here, just to kind of get you up to speed on the trip. So in all fifty states in Puerto Rico, the National FFA Organization has a strong presence as the largest student-led organization in the nation, consisting of over seven-hundred-and-thirty-thousand members and eighty-seven-hundred chapters. This event is the largest gathering of FFA members each year. Uh, the national level trip is not only an opportunity for our chapter members to experience the FFA on a national scale, but an important opportunity for them to continue to develop their personal and professional skills prior to graduation. Students from all over the coun, students from all over the country attend this trip to make memories with their chapter members, build professional connections, learning, learn about cutting-edge technology, and explore potential STEM careers. Uh, opportunities for students include, uh, visiting the expo hall and blue room to network with industry professionals and colleges, participate in student workshops, uh, engage in national FFA sessions, engage with the national FFA officer team, and network with FFA members from across the US and Connecticut. Um, so I hope that the board would support this opportunity. Megan Berry has done a lot of work spearheading the agenda and planning for this trip, and, uh, that would take place, uh, the week of October twenty-fourth.
All right, Alex?
Why aren't she, seniors included?
So, the officer team is only sophomores and juniors. So, just based on, typically, schools would bring kids if they, uh, if they had teams that won their CDE contest areas. Um, that's why certain schools bring a lot more students, because those students have won at the state level, and oftentimes those students are seniors. Um, our officer team at this school is only juniors and sophomores.
Thank you. Yeah, Barry?
I, I know the, the students were very excited to go with you, and they, they spoke to us about how, how excited they were. They were excited to go last year, and they were excited when they came back to present to us. And when our Congresswoman, Johanna Hayes, was here, they were also excitedly talking to her about how they went. And, uh, she thought it was great, and she's on the, uh, uh, she's our federal, uh, Congresswoman, and she is on the Agriculture Committee, so she was very interested in what the kids had to say about that.
Right, yeah, um, you know, we talked about celebrating success today, at, uh, our first day, and it, I've seen firsthand, a lot of kids, you know, you bring them to Nationals and they're, and they're very shy. And then, uh, because they don't understand the scope of the organization, and then when you put them in the football stadium size hall with all of their co-FFA members, um, it kind of wakes them up, and there's nothing like that. So.
John, did you have a question?
Yes. So, Na'awag is providing a bus all the way to Indianapolis?
Yeah, so we would actually leave Monday. They, uh, have also been gracious enough to provide us with, they booked extra hotel rooms, so we've purchased, or are looking to purchase those. Um, there's one stop in Ohio on the way there, and then, uh, continue to Indianapolis the following morning.
Okay, thanks for providing the itinerary, and how long is the total?
It's Monday, uh, until, and we would be coming straight back Saturday. So they would miss a week of school, essentially.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Tyler, about, so, so you've got a smallish group of kids going this year, or is that the idea?
Nine, nine students.
Okay, I think we only had eight last year, didn't we?
Yeah, so probably the, uh, officer teams both year. Um, hopefully this year Shapog can compete at the state level and send some winning teams, uh, at next year's convention.
So that's typically, it's not every kid in the program goes, but the officer team and any winning teams at the state level.
Exactly.
Well, go for it. Uh, the more kids that go to this, I think the better, the better it is for them and the program. Uh, yes, I'll entertain a motion to, uh, approve, uh, the field trip request to the FFA National Convention in Indianapolis, Indiana, on October twenty-four to twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-two, for grades ten and eleven, the Ag Science Program.
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second? Move in second, is there further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? It's unanimous.
Great, thanks, guys. We will keep you posted, and I will have a student follow-up at, uh, ensuing meeting.
Yeah, we look forward to hearing from them. All right, uh, the last item on our action item list is to consider and if appropriate, approve the disposal of smart boards district-wide. I presume these are smart boards that, uh, we have replaced with more modern smart boards.
Go about this subject. So, um, there are twenty-one boards that were taken out of various, various blocks of districts that are between eight and ten-year-old. Originally cost thirty-five hundred and forty-five hundred dollars. Each of which, or the IT people have stripped the necessary components to keep some of our own boards of that similar age going. These boards, uh, have no real value as a result of that. And they've been canceled. Keep ours running. If a board were in, I'm just giving you the data, that if a board were in great condition, and, uh, you were to sell it, an eight-to-ten-year-old, uh, there are numbers out there of about a thousand dollars on eBay. and you were to sell it, an eight to ten-year-old, there are numbers out there of about a thousand dollars on eBay. Take your, you know, take your chance to buy and see how it is. But that's all the information I've got at the moment, other than that the people that are taking it, are doing it for no fee as a, you know, in exchange for the transportation to come and do it, and they're called total recovery. They typically strip these components of their precious metals. That's what their twist in the whole operation is. They're presently stored in each of the elementary schools, either in the gyms or on the stages right now, awaiting disposal. It was something that was overlooked back in the June meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the, what was the exact word?
Disposal of smart boards.
Of obsolete smart boards.
Okay, is there a second? Move is seconded. Further discussion?
I'd like to ask a question.
Yeah, go, John.
No way of donating these to a worthy cause like as we do with Chromebooks?
The IT department had considered that option and decided to take the components that were of value to store in their, in their shop for any potential repairs to our existing boards of that same age. The technology is eight to ten years behind, and it's difficult to find people who are interested in investing in older technology like that, even for free. So they felt the best thing to do is to take the components to repair our own boards.
Can I just add to that? During COVID, with all the money that was provided to districts, especially, you know, cities and districts like that, they invested a lot in current, modern technology. That was one of the biggest things that I think they had to, because kids were online.
Right. I had the same problem with the furniture.
All right. Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and raising your hand.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? I count that as unanimous vote? All right, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss settlement agreement with, and limited release with KBA? Second?
Second.
Second, and all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all those abstaining, it's unanimous, we will go into executive session.